This conference will now be recorded.
We'll get you guys to print it out.
Ron, it sounds like there might be some feedback.
That's me?
Yeah.
Um, Jesse, do you have your sound on? On the computer? So that'll cause feedback?
Yeah.
Okay. May just be the printer.
Just as a reminder, um, if you don't talk into the microphone directly, they won't hear you.
Then you may be hearing our printer. We wanted to get a couple of things printed out. So joys of, joys of COVID, um, need to get a couple of things done since nobody's been in the office.
At least the printer's right there.
I blame COVID. I don't blame anybody else with COVID.
Yeah, everybody's here.
Yep, we're good. As soon as we have those copies, we'll, we'll proceed.
Sorry, I should have put her on the phone.
No, you're, you're okay.
Everybody always looks at the screen. I can't tell who wants paper and who wants not.
For note taking, it's, it's best.
True.
So then you can just keep those and you're up to date.
Yes. Bailey, we hit print one more time for Marvin.
All right. Ben and Ron, are you ready at home? Okay, great. So at this time, we'll go ahead and call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, January 29th, 2021. We'll go ahead and call the roll.
Say what?
Tuesday, January 12th, sorry. Taking ahead, 2021.
Brian Green.
Here.
Ron Dane.
Here.
Jesse Koppel. Ben Lee.
Here.
John Merriman.
Here. Okay. And we'll go ahead and do. We will go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. And you guys at home? All right, we will go ahead. Reset, okay. Okay, we will go ahead and move on to public comment on matters not on the agenda. I understand that we do have one, um, point that will be on public comment. I want to remind everybody of, uh, your talking points here. Three minutes, um, per resident. If you can come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and we will stick to, uh, topics just on the matter. Um, as much as we can, no personal attacks or anything like that, if you please. Um, we'll go ahead and open to public comment.
Just remind them to state their name and address.
Yes, yes, and again, please state your name and address for the record. We'll go ahead and open to public comment. Uh, if, if this is, this is just on matters not on the agenda. So I know that we had a, another issue that. Yeah, if it doesn't pertain to anything, you can go ahead and make it now. If, if you want to wait, if, if you feel it would be better served later on. Okay. All right, we will go ahead and open to public comment. Go ahead. Just into the podium there.
I'm not sure what's on the agenda or what's not on the agenda, but my name is Jerry Pulli, 11 Lewis Drive, Johnstown. What I'm called about, I got wind of the fact that my neighbor is going to be issued some kind of a net allowance or something. Let him construct a mini home in his driveway, I assume. And, uh, I just wanted to know, I guess it hasn't been issued yet, it might have been issued yet. But my concern is why and how was this being allowed? I look up at these zoning laws and they all, you know, say residential is residential and not, nothing should be non-residential. With, you know, this is the practice and intent of the law to let him do it. There's nothing in the law about construction, it's up on a mini, you know, mini home in your driveway. And so I look at all the ordinances that apply to home occupancy rules and this and that, and there's nothing in there that allows this to happen. My concern is basically, why is it, is it being allowed? Is it being considered? And on what basis is it being allowed or considered?
Okay.
And now, I don't know who gives me those answers or, you know, what.
This is the one on the corner of Westview.
It's, uh, Six, Six Westview.
So has, Jim, has there been any permits issued on that property?
No, there's no permits to be issued on the property. Uh, it would be, an example would be if you decided you wanted to build a canoe in your driveway or a boat. We have nothing in our current zoning that says you can't do that. Or if you wanted to build a street rod in your driveway, we don't have any. We also have on the books where you can, let's say you're doing a addition on your house and you've got a construction trailer. You can park that construction drive, in your driveway for up to a year. This person is going to build a, has a 24-foot, uh, fifth-wheel trailer. And they're going to go build a tiny house on it and, uh, then remove it from the property. We don't have anything to prevent him from doing it.
We've talked about ADUs, we did talk about trailers, we did talk about trucks, commercial vehicles.
So, uh, so Jim's interpretation sounds like it's because it's on wheels, it's not a structure, doesn't need a permit, that's basically your interpretation, right?
Correct, yes. And this is the first time we've ever had a request for, like this.
So let us, let us take a look.
So we've looked at a couple of things on this and, and what I saw in Jim's, in Jim's report, um, and I had heard in, in the previous meetings, I know it's out there in the public, but, um, the construction trailer argument, I mean, it predicates on a permit. If you look at the construction trailer item in there, it's within eight feet of a structure being built and permitted. It can be in there for a year, but it is, it is a construction trailer to drop off supplies for us, for another project, so I understand where it ties in.
Or to store, store your, your building material.
Right. Now we're talking about a trailer that is the project. Um, so it doesn't really, they don't really tie in, and I understand that. That it's not. Go ahead and mute online, please. Um, I understand that it's not something that is specifically expressed in there. So we are going to have to pull from other codes possibly to rationalize, but we're not talking about something that was or wasn't permitted at this point.
No.
Um, this individual had come to the village, um, you know, looking to see if this was or wasn't allowed. Um, I think we jumped the gun here without taking a further look at it. Um, and I think it deserves further look. I think this is a project, as opposed to building a canoe or a smaller project, I think this is a lot more involved. This is something that's, you know, it's 24 feet long. I'm not sure how high on the dimensions, but it is a living structure being built. Although the living structure is supposed to move at the end of the project, there's nothing that says it will move, um, and won't come back in the future. So it is different from an RV or another trailer in the fact that if you're working on your trailer, it's a finished product. But if you're working on this, this is an unfinished project that is going to become something larger. So I think there's a lot more that goes into this. I think it is worth a, a second look. Um. And again, going back to that construction trailer argument, I mean, it has to be eight feet from the unit. I get that it has to be 11 feet from the sidewalk. We have a driveway here of about 50 feet, so there is room, um, but there's a lot of other things that go into it.
Not to interrupt, Ron, but if you read in through the ordinance, there's things about parking, there's things in there about traffic flow, there's all kinds of things. The thing about it is last year, he ran a business out there building planter boxes. I don't know whether he had a home occupancy permit to do that. You know, he tied up the street, he bragged on Facebook about keeping, putting these cars on the street. So if he takes something out of his driveway, puts them on the street, there's a parking car in there that affects people. And the ordinance does say that it's kind of the zoning. A residential area will be used as residential, residential purpose, it's all purpose it can be done. And it build it, so let somebody come in and build a house, say builds it on a trailer, saying that's illegal. Just in case you don't say anything about against it, you do say something against it because by inclusion, you say, I'm not supposed to do this if it's not a residential, uh, application, which is isn't. He's building, using this and wants to preclude him from. You know, you know, I don't know whether he has an HOP on his current property to build those box. Well, he's in violation of that, nobody ever did anything about it.
You're lame, I could. I cannot stop them building, uh, those planter boxes at his house. He did not have a sign in the yard to set them up for sale. He wasn't advertising on any way that I know of, so he was building planter boxes. And he was like, to do that, that they had to be out of sight. And something that he'd have to do inside his house or was in a part of his yard where they could not be seen by the public.
What's an HOP all about then? I thought an HOP is anytime you've engaged.
It's a home occupancy permit where you're running, you have an office in your house or the most recent one we have, we have a young lady that has a, a small child and she wanted to be able to.
Again, the, uh, I know that we have some viewers online, if we could go ahead and mute that, everybody could mute, please.
Oh. Brian's running his meeting, he's the commissioner. He's talking, remember some of that little house, wasn't him running the meeting? You can watch it live, but I, you can't hear it, go ahead.
I think we're going to have, I think we're going to have more on this as we go. Now on the online, who is that that's online, if you can see? Yeah, if you could, if you could go ahead. This is on Jim's report for this month.
So this, this is going to come up later, um, week, on Jim's report, the last part of our meeting, we'll have further discussion on.
We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and open it up because I know that, I know that this was an issue that a, a couple of people had reached out to us on before. We'll go ahead and, and open discussion for it because we have a lot, and this is going to be a long meeting, so we do have a couple of things on here, but.
So I don't get to say anything?
No, go ahead, go ahead, we're going to open this up.
I do want to say something. I have proof, I took pictures.
If you could state your name and your address for us, sorry.
Harriet Pulli, 11 Lewis Drive, Johnstown, Ohio. I took pictures of everything he had posted on Facebook. Jim, I'm sorry, but it shows his planners, it shows him asking for someone to come work for him, what he would pay them. He advertised the sizes of them, they needed to contact him and they could come and pick them up. And I do have proof on my phone. That's all I want to say.
Okay, if you could, if you could, would you like to get that an email or, she can just print that out at this point? We have more on this. If you could, if you could send an email, uh, to the village on anything that you'd found.
That was wonderful.
Thank you.
Marvin Block, 225 Edwards Road, Johnstown, Ohio. Uh, specific word definitions. Words not otherwise defined herein shall be defined as solid in Webster's Underbridge Dictionary. You have no definition of a mini home in your refine, in your code. Now. You get into Webster and you get into, uh, people that print our, uh, laws and things. Uh, I meant construction failure, I'm sorry. If you get into construction failure. Definition of construction failure. Means a building or structure that is designed, be made mobile and drawn by a separate vehicle and is used with the purpose of storage or administration on a site while building, construction is taking place as set out in permit, in a building permit. The purpose of this definition, a mobile home is defined by this, by law, shall not be considered a construction trailer. Any questions on that?
No, no, thank you, Marvin. Um. Jim, do you have any further background on this one, as far as?
Other than the agreement that.
As far as overall dimensions, um, any hard?
No, because he, he didn't have all that information available, other than it was a 24-foot gooseneck trailer he was going to build it on.
Okay. With no height or anything like that?
No.
Okay. Um.
So the person you're talking about is on the line, if you would like to ask the questions?
Yes, please, if, some more information, please state your name and address. Drive through?
Yes, my name is John Luke, that's Six Westview Drive, Johnstown, Ohio.
I'm sorry, Marvin, if, if you could go ahead and.
Okay, if you begin, you're chapter 1178, oh, oh, one, 1175, 11. Last letter I, parking of trailers and recreational vehicles on residential property. Last sentence down there, construction trailer shall be permitted to be parked at the residence for a period not to exceed one year. Said construction trailer shall not be permitted on residential property until a building permit is issued and the body of the trailer shall be set back at least five foot from any property line and eight foot from the dwelling under construction. That is a trailer to build a house, not to build a trailer on property. This is where a construction trailer is, has your tools and things in it, Ryan.
Right.
It's, it's been totally taken out of context. Uh. I spent 10 hours researching this and talking to people about it. I pulled this out of the law library and that's why, when we send our ordinances and things in, this is for the company that prints it. That's where I got the definition for a construction trailer, because our book is too old to have a construction in there. Our construction trailer vested or a mini home. Uh.
Can I ask you a question real quick? Clearly, is your interpretation of our, our ordinances that it probably can build, you should be allowed to build this?
He's not, uh, he can't build it. He can have a construction trailer in there while he's building a house that he has a permit for.
That's what I said, yeah.
It has to be a permitted, uh, uh.
I know that the rationale on this from the report, it was pulled from a couple of different ordinances, and I, that's where Marvin's going with this, I think. There's a couple of different ordinances that loosely have to do with trailers, but nothing that's expressly permits this item.
I.
Did you, did you have any further points on that, Marvin?
Yes. That's a residential area, that is manufacturing, if you start building houses down there. And if we start doing that, and we're going to do it on a handshake and go back and check it, I want permission to build a 16 by 80 in my front yard. Are we going to allow everybody in town to build a trailer in their front yard?
That's why we're taking a look at this.
I've got two acres, I could build about three down there.
That's why we're taking a look at this. It needs, it needs further investigation.
Okay, I've got a little, little poem here for you.
And I understand you're, you're up against your three minutes, but I'll let you go ahead.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I wanted to call out to you. The, uh, under the charter, section 703, Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission shall consider, be considered of five electors of the municipal power group, shall serve overlapping four-year terms, one of which may be a council member who shall serve at the pleasure of council and one which may be a member of the Johnstown Monroe School Board. Powers and duties of the commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission shall have the power and duty to hear applications for land use, zoning certificates, districts as, uh, mentioned, to submit written recommendations for legislation actions or to render, render final determinations for administrative actions to initiate, review and recommend legislation rules and regulations on all matters of municipal planning, use and zoning classifications and to exercise such other powers and duties and functions as provided by council. Do we all understand that?
We understand that.
One more thing and I'll get out of here. Under section 112505, zoning inspector appointed and duties. Appointment, a zoning inspector shall be appointed by the manager to enforce and regulate containing, uh, the zoning ordinance under the control of the manager. The zoning inspector shall be considered compensated as provided by council and shall serve three-year term. Right of entry, the zoning inspector is hereby granted the power and authority to enter at reasonable times and any provision premises in the village to investigate a condition which might constitute a violation of the provisions of this zoning ordinance. He shall have the authority to require the person in control, in charge of such premises to finish, furnish him a cop, a statement as to the number of persons and occupants of the dwelling. Uh. Duties for the purpose enforcing of the zoning ordinance, provide and act upon issues and revoke permits, make inspections, ensure compliance, receive and act upon complaints. Uh, upon find, findings that any provision of this ordinance is violated shall act upon it. Uh, order discontinuance of illegal use of land buildings or structures. Order removal of illegal buildings or structures. Order content, order discontinuance of any illegal workforce being done. Take any other actions authorized by the zoning ordinance to ensure compliance with this ordinance book. Keep an official record and enter as an appeals process. And it doesn't say anything in here about having a handshake agreement without having a zoning permit to build a structure unless it's maintenance. Thank you for your time.
I appreciate your testimony on that, and, uh, we will go now to our, to our online caller.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, this is John Luke, uh, address is Six Westview Drive.
Go ahead.
Uh, that's, so I am the one that you have kindly been talking about for, well, over almost an hour at this point between meetings. Um, I am, I'm hearing the issues, uh, that are being brought up, but I have not heard any actual documentation of ordinances that would, uh, stop us from doing this. Uh, I have, as we've talked about, I've talked to Jim, uh, who talked to the village planner, uh, who has copied, uh, who appears to be a, a legal entity on our email conversations, which are not handshake agreements. And, uh, have been given the okay to build this. Uh, I'm happy to answer questions if people have them and want to ask them in a civil manner. Uh, but that's, that's where we are as of right now. So if anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to, to address those.
As much as I would love to do a Q and A with you in the public, um, we're not down that road, but I will ask, if you could give us the exact parameters of the project, um, as far as height, width, weight, everything to do with the project and your timeframe and, and pieces of the run that we can understand.
Yep, so the, the project is a 24-foot long, uh, fifth-wheeler gooseneck trailer. Um, we're looking to build it to about 13 foot three, um, so that we stay within the, uh, road worthiness of, of a mobile home, uh, of a, a tiny home. Um, as far as weight, the trailer is a, uh, 14,000-pound trailer, so we'll need to keep it underneath, uh, that 14,000 pounds. Unfortunately, I don't have the exact weight of what it will be when it's finished, besides that we'll make sure that it's below that. Um. I have, uh, as Jim mentioned in the last meeting, uh, he proposed some, uh, parameters that he would ask that we complete it within one year. Uh, that we follow contractors' hours so as not to, uh, borrow, bother the neighbors into the evening. And, uh, that we keep it safely, uh, away from the sidewalk and that we cover and clean up, uh, each night when we're done. Uh, as I've stated in the email to Jim, I have absolutely no issue following those, those parameters. That seems like a reasonable thing that I can accommodate the neighbors for. Um, that, there was some conversation in the last meeting, uh, about what our plans are, if we're going to sell it or if we're going to, uh, move it to a property that we own elsewhere. Uh, we do not own property. Our intention is to build the home and immediately upon completion, list our home for sale and live full-time as, uh, a mobile tenants in that. Uh, so that's, it's not something that will continue to stay here, it's not even something that will continue to be parked, um, as an RV would. The, the plan is to immediately move that outside of Johnstown and list the home for sale. Uh, my home that I live in currently, not the tiny home.
Uh, Ron and Ben, do you have any?
My question was answered there, was it, uh, being built to sell or was it being built for the owner? And then, uh, was it going to be moved out the site? We're in a difficult. We're in a difficult situation because we don't have the ADU legislation in. And is there something that says we cannot do this on his property? With one offer like this, it's, it's hard to say. I'm not quite sure what we do there.
Yeah, that's kind of the, the same place that, that I'm at, Ron, as with Ron. It's, at the moment, it feels like a lot of gray space. Because there isn't anything specific, one way or the other, to permit or deny. And with that, my understanding is the ambiguity typically favors the resident rather than the municipality. And so to that end, with an agreement already having been made. It, it sounds as if it, it is what it is. And it also sounds as if there's some clarification with respect to the intent relative to what was discussed a week ago. So, Mr. Luke, I appreciate you clearing that up because it, there was some different discussion as to what the intent was going to be going forward. So the couple of questions that I have, it sounds like they have been answered at this point. And I think it's just incumbent upon the, the commission to have conversations. And if there's any other questions that need to be asked from anybody else with additional context. It's incumbent upon the commission to take the information that we have at this point and further deliberate. But with the agreement that's already in place. I, I don't know that there's anything else that the board can or should do at the moment, to be honest with you. So that's my opinion.
So a little food for thought. Considering that this technically is going to be a mobile vehicle at some point. During the construction phase, it's going to be a stationary building on a premises. It's going to be constructed unpermitted until it's completed and then is registered as such vehicle to then move. So that's, I would say that's the reason why we probably need to look into a little more. It's because at the moment, it's a stationary building on somebody's property. I could put a shed on wheels. Put in my backyard and sit on blocks and say it's mobile. But it's really not until I intend to move it.
Exactly.
That's probably why most of the people here have a little opposition to it is that it is indeed going to be moved in theory, or as they're saying it's going to be. But until that time, it's a stationary project on somebody's property where they're building a living dwelling. And kind of skirting around the ways of permitting a living dwelling. So.
Exactly. Well, I think therein lies some of what the issue is, is that it's, it's similar to, and it's, it's similar to this and it's similar to that, but the explicitness isn't in the code. So I think that's where some of the, the ambiguity with respect to the gray space lends itself to some level of subjective approval. In that there's precedents that hasn't necessarily been set with this specific type of instance. So.
Same thing, mobile home.
Coming up.
Right? Same thing as a mobile home, right? You move a trailer onto a property, put it on blocks and it doesn't move.
Happens to be on wheels. There's, again, there's, there's several things to this. And I mean, I think, I think the gun was jumped here with a quote unquote handshake deal, which should not be permissible in any court of law. I've never seen it be permissible. And I mean, I know that the resident has subjected himself to the village semi-approval on this with offering terms and terms being negotiated. So with that, I would suggest and make a recommendation that we stop building on, on this project until we can look into this further. Because I, I think that, you know, I think that the village had moved a little fast on this without better review. I think there's a couple of things to be considered and I would like to see those be considered a little bit more by zoning and our staff before we allow a project like this and this can of worms to continue. So I would make the recommendation at this time that we stop progress of this project and reconsider. Is there any further public comment on this?
Go ahead.
Yes, this is John Luke again. I would just ask, under what ordinance or?
I know this is a, this is a tough format, having online callers and, and people in here. We do have one resident. I'm going to give him, yield him the floor. And if you'd like to speak again, we can circle back around to you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Doug Cook, twenty-five Westview Drive, Johnstown. John is an enterprising businessman. So my only concern was that it was going to be an ongoing process, a reproducible process, where he was going to be manufacturing these. After the first one was made to, you know, establish a precedent, possibly reproduce more than one of them. As an ongoing manufacturing site. That would have been my only objection to it.
Okay, thank you.
Marvin Block three twenty-five Edwards Road, Ryan under section eleven twenty-five oh six appeals. Agreed parties who allege there was an error in any order requirement. Decision or determination made by the zoning inspector may appeal the zoning inspector's actions to the zoning board commission. And when it gets down here, the reasons for appeal is that the appeal was made in a timely fashion within forty-five days. Appeal, appeal has standing to make the appeal. The only zoning inspector improperly interpreted the zoning code.
I would argue that since we haven't had, we haven't had a permit on this. And that's, that's kind of the point where we are. To appeal something where there's no permit, I don't know that we can go down that road. And that's why I suggest stopping progress on this until we can research and, and go through this a little bit more. I wouldn't want to publicly question our staff as to their motives or, or their decisions. This is something for an
I don't question the staff.
Something for, for an executive session. And I think that's where we need to head on this as we examine and take a better look before we allow something like this to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we go into executive session to talk, to make a vote on?
Not well.
No, we could, it would not be a permissible reason to go into executive session. Furthermore, you cannot be executive session.
I agree with Marvin that, that you could, the appeal process, if you look at
Jesse, can you speak into the mic please? I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you look at, can you hear me? I agree with Marvin that the appeal process, it says in three point oh two, point oh five, powers and duties, section D, hear and decide appeals. Where there's been an error in an order, a decision, or determination made by the zoning inspector. So I don't think that an error in decision, I don't think there needs to necessarily be a permit to start to use the appeal process.
I agree. That's the, I read it, Jesse, I was going to call that out as well.
You did the decision, I think the appeal process would be the appropriate to go.
Right. I see this as an open, as an open topic since there was never a permit issued, although
But there was a decision.
There was a decision.
That's why I'm
I see this as an open issue that, that could still be stopped. And that's, that's the way I would take this.
In my opinion, I would not support a recommendation from this board for stoppage unilaterally without some kind of appeals process review with further deliberation from, from others. Because in my mind, again, the gray space favors the, the resident. Without the explicit listing yes or no. So I, I agree, the appeals process, in my opinion, feels like that if there is a concern, that's the more formalized way and method to address this, if there are concerns with it. And, and that's, that's where my opinion is.
I'd like to add, add a couple of things, just thoughts. If I decided I wanted to build a shed in my driveway, bigger than what Mr. Luke is going to build for his, his mini home. I could build a shed in my driveway. And then I would, and I want to put it on my property and it's so big, I can't move it. But it's in my driveway. And I could hire someone to put it in my yard. And then, but before I did that, I would have to get a shed permit for thirty dollars. And it would have to be, the shed would have to be placed within the setbacks that are allowed. If I had a motor home, I have a neighbor that has a fifty-two foot motor home. It's parked on a concrete driveway, back out of the way. It, it, it meets all the requirements for keeping a motor home on your property. If he decided he wanted to gut the motor home and work on it, there's nothing we could say about it. If he wanted to build a boat in his driveway, there's nothing we could say about it. So that, in my thinking, that the tiny home request from Mr. Luke was, there isn't a category for it. There isn't an ordinance that says he can't do it. There isn't an ordinance that says he can do it, do it. So to deny him the opportunity to do that is, I, I can't really say, no, you can't do that. Based on our current zoning ordinances.
But to that point, other than, other than semi, not permanently, we do have laws for an RV. But an RV falls under other codes and how it's built. This is a living structure and I get that it is on wheels. But until it's certified and until it goes through the process, it's a shed and a, or in a living structure, more of a living structure. And I know that we have stuff that's coming through the books on ADUs. I wish that would have worked past a little bit sooner. It hasn't. But we do have other things. And on the books right now, it says there are no accessory dwelling units currently. That's what it does say on the books. And right now, that is an accessory dwelling unit sitting on the ground. It just happens to be on wheels. Until it's, until it's registered.
John, speaking to the mic, I'm sorry.
John, if you could speak into the mic, they can't hear you.
I look at it, the same thing is if you were to build, if you were going to say, I'm going to build a modular home in my driveway. Like, to me, it's a trailer. You're building a trailer. Whether he chooses to park it for a long term somewhere on blocks or not, I don't think that if anybody in here wanted to build a trailer in their driveway. I mean, that's a living structure. You'd probably, you'd probably have some sort of contempt about it. Right? Because that's essentially what it is. I mean, a trailer, when you move it down the road, you get it registered to move. You don't put it up and drive it right down the road behind your truck.
And I, I agree with you. But I also want to point out again, we do not have anything that prevent him from doing this.
By his admission, this is a living structure and we do have code on the books that says no accessory dwelling units.
But he's not going to live in it.
Let me, let me just bring it back to this, to this code here where it says zoning certificates. It's no four point zero one. No building or other structure shall be erected, moved, added, or structurally altered. Or shall any building, structure, or land be established, used, or changed pursuant to section four point oh two below without a zoning certificate. So no buildings or structure shall be erected, moved. And then section oh two. A zoning certificate shall be required and obtained prior to the undertaking or beginning of any of the following. Section, item B, the alteration, construction, conversion, creation, and whole and part of any building, structure of any building or structure. So is this, I mean, to me, that could be interpreted to say he needs a permit if he's going to build anything.
Right, you have to have a permit to, yeah. Yeah, the only thing that makes this gray area is, is the intent and is his word and is, is Jim's word. And I'm not going to speculate on the value of anybody's word, but
Well, to me
That's, that's what makes this a gray area.
If he's building a structure on his, on his land, that's not gray in this, under this provision in my mind.
He's also building it on a trailer.
That's, that's, that's the great part.
That's as far away from getting a permanent structure as you can get.
When you, when you register it. Right now, it's not street legal. And it doesn't have anything, there's no engine or anything like that that would make it obviously street legal. He would have to follow, and from reading into tiny houses, a lot into our dwelling unit information that we did. There's a whole process that they have to go and register these things. Not to mention, you know, if, if it's over a certain weight, you have to have a certain class of CDL to even move it. So it's, it's not something, you know, and at a certain point, are we even talking about a commercial vehicle? So now we're talking about a commercial building in a commercial use.
That's the other, this is a non
That's light manufacturing, which is not this area. This is residential. That's what I said there. And again, we can split hairs with this all night. And that's why I said I, I think we need to table this argument for another day.
All right, let's move on then.
Yep, I'm, I'm not in favor of completely revoking at this point. I'm, I'm in favor of tabling temporarily until we can see everything and actually have a chance to review this.
We have another meeting within the forty-five days that it's timely, I think, under the process. So let's just do, let's do that for eight.
And again, since there's no permit on this, technically, we don't fall within that thirty-day guideline. But I would, I would argue that we need to just, just to remedy this in a timely manner.
Okay. I agree.
Yeah, I agree. I think we'll meet in two weeks.
Okay. And Mr. Luke, we would invite you back with any information you could provide on this at that time. And please feel free to email anything to us that you can in the meantime. All right. So we will go ahead and close public comment on this and move on to the approval of the minutes from December second, twenty twenty. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Chairman Green.
Yes.
Ron Dane.
Yes.
Jesse Koppel.
Yes.
Ron Merriman.
Yes.
I assume you said, I'll say yes.
Oh.
Did I skip you? I'm sorry.
This is the weirdest. We got Ron.
Ron Dane.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We will go ahead and move on to variance application twenty twenty dash four two seven dash Z sidewalk. This is at four eleven, four twelve, and fourteen Buena Vista Drive. Could you give us some background on this?
We also have a representative, Linda Chambers is here to answer questions. Hi Dan. At the corner of Edwards Road and Buena Vista Drive, there's the two corner lots that face each other. One on each side of the street. And then there's a, a second lot on the west side as you come in off of Edwards Road. And it wraps around the corner lot. So you have three So you have three properties that have a border on Edwards Road. Edwards Road, a little background on Edwards Road. Years ago, I don't know how many years ago, I think it was in the nineties. The village came up with enough funds to put sidewalk on Edwards Road. And they started up at the corner of Edwards and North Main. And they went all the way down that, right to Marvin's, the property, the Marvin block owns there. And then they stopped that, even though there was probably, let's say, five more houses along that side of the street, all within the village. Reason they stopped the sidewalk there was because of the terrain and you were starting down the hill. And some of those properties from the edge of Edwards Road till you get down to the ground, there's a couple of places, it's ten to twelve feet. So there was no place for a sidewalk. So you have the road and the drop-off. And so the village said, well, maybe someday, but right now, no, we're not gonna do sidewalk here. So now the property at Buena Vista has been developed, been here for, actually developed for years. And it was dormant because of the downturn in the building industry. And now the lots have become a bargain and there's a lot of interest in these lots. They're great lots. They're, it's an SR one and SR two building district. So the smallest, the smallest lot in.
Again, with the online callers, if we could make sure those are muted, please.
The smallest slot in there is thirteen thousand square feet, which is over, about a third of an acre. And then there are some very large lots too. So taking that all consideration, within the Buena Vista, the Raccoon Creek Estates, everybody will have sidewalks on Buena Vista. And, but you get up to the corner and it would be if we required these property owners to put in sidewalk, it's gonna be a sidewalk to nowhere. That's one issue. The next issue is the road, we have committed funds from ODOT for, I think it's two thousand, or twenty, twenty-two? I'm sorry, twenty-eight. Twenty-eight for to completely replace the road. Take it all the way down and it has no base on it. It's just, it was a gravel path that was blacktop. We have that going. And then we've also, in the meantime, because the road is in deplorable condition. In the meantime, we've went together with Monroe Township and applied for a grant to get a couple inches of blacktop put on the existing road, just so it can survive until that twenty-twenty-eight. If you, but when we do that road, we're gonna, we wanna do curb gutter and storm sewer system. The sidewalk, if we put it in now, would probably have to be removed at that time. So the variance, and I'll let Linda talk about it a little bit here. Linda, you will come up to the mic. Now, I, I, one of the properties is sold, correct, Linda?
Yes, one of them has just sold and that's why Dan's here.
And the request for no sidewalk, the, the discussion about this started in two thousand and eighteen. John Nyberg had the lot in contract. And when the person found out they had to pay eighteen thousand dollars for a sidewalk on Edwards Road, they walked away from the deal. And then there's been other people interested in it. So with being a country road and I sent the letters out to the contiguous property owners. And on the other side of the road, I, the, the person that owns the most property there on seventy-two acres. On the other side of the road is Monroe Township. So we got the village on one side, Monroe Township on the other side. That property owner called me and he thought it would be, he said, I'm not objecting to it, but he said, I think it'd be kind of foolish to put a sidewalk on a country road. Other than that's the only call I got about it.
So the only other thing that I'd had to add to that is for the, to go west on that sidewalk, it will then go down and end at the creek. Goes right into a floodplain and then becomes the creek right there. And so really, I just, if you have any questions, Jim explained everything pretty well.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Ben.
Um, I just wanted to validate, uh, th- this is for the three lots, four-eleven, four-twelve and four-thirteen with the applicant being Linda Chambers. On behalf of those properties, I did notice lot four-twelve recently changed ownership. I didn't know if the new owner was present tonight or not.
I think the new owner is watching online.
Okay. I just wanted to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Their realtor is here.
Okay, I, I just wanted to validate for the record, just because the name of the new owner for that property wasn't on the application that they are in favor of this variance as well, as well as you acting on their behalf. I just wanted to validate that.
Do you wanna respond to that, Dan?
I'm sorry, I can't, I'm, I'm not able to hear.
Yes, Dan Diani, three-fifty-one North Granger Street, Granville. I'm the agent representing the new owner, whose name is Kelly Nye, and she is in favor of the request to waive the variance requiring extra sidewalks running down Edwards Road.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that question and have it on the record. Perfect. Thank you for that. And then the other.
Then the walks in front of the house, houses will, uh, on the public sidewalk go up to Edwards Road and then there'll be ADA required ramps there.
Okay, perfect. What I'm gonna do real quick is just run through the practical difficulty questions for this with respect to the way that I read them. The part, with the property in question, yield a reasonable return. Can there be any beneficial use without the variance? The answer is yes, the return is situational, probably market-based, based off of what it costs to put the sidewalks in. But I think it's situational and unique in this respect because we do have this application for Edwards Road and it might not be, may all be in vain if we deny the request and have to put the sidewalks in, which I think Jim alluded to. Whether the variance is substantial, I would say no. The character of the neighborhood adversely affected, I would say no. Would the variance adversely affect delivery governmental services? No. The property owner purchased the property with the knowledge of the zoning restriction, not really restriction, but requirement, yes. I think that's stated in there as well. Whether the property owner predicament feasibly can be obviated through other means other than a variance, yes, by installing the sidewalks, but costly, which affects item number one with respect to, to the return. And then number seven, the spirit and intent behind the code. Would it be observed and substantial justice done by granting the variance? I would say yes, it would be upheld the spirit and intent of the code by granting the variance because the point is to connect sidewalks, but it's not necessarily just to connect sidewalks wherever we can put them. It's a meaningful connection with people who want to go places. And down Edwards Road in that area, it doesn't seem like it makes a whole lot of sense. Based off of that and the information that I have here, I, I don't have any other questions, but I would be in favor of granting the variance. It makes sense to me.
I do have a couple of questions. Looks like two-sixty-five and two, two-sixty-five and two-sixty-nine. Where the current sidewalk drops off, there's a few, it looks like there's two or three houses that don't have sidewalks. Is that right?
Correct.
And they never will be required to have.
Well, not, you, you'd have to, you're gonna have a major issues there with the road versus their yards. Some of the yards are higher than the sidewalk and then they drop off. The last house on the left before you get Buena Vista has a start, a four to twelve-foot drop. The only way you could put a sidewalk in there, you'd have to fill in the front yard of that property with dirt. First, you'd have to put a major tile system underneath it, fill it in with dirt and, and then put a sidewalk on top of it.
So did they get a variance for those, the ones, the others?
No, that, those houses were there.
Those are there before the rules, okay. So basically, well, that we're always, even if we had these on Edwards, there's still gonna be a break, but we're not gonna have a continuous flow. I think that's important for me, kind of.
Down the side. I mean, would I love to see sidewalk down there? Yeah.
Yeah, I would too, but it's just not practical.
It's just not gonna work. Okay, we'll go ahead. Ron, did you have anything on this?
Jim, when did you say the Edwards is gonna be improved? Can you hear me?
I think it's twenty-twenty-nine, Ron.
I know. Is there any way we could put in language that when they do improve Edwards, to include a sidewalk engineering in there, at least on one side? I know obviously it wouldn't affect the variance here, but it would be nice to have, even if it is a close in, you know, part of the curb.
Did the city pay for it or village?
Yeah, and the contract is part of the, because I, I think in the future, if that area develops, we're gonna check ourselves for not having a sidewalk. Obviously, it doesn't make sense to have one seven foot off the curb. But in the future, we could combine a curb and a sidewalk connected in there when we do improvements to Edwards. There's gonna be housing developments in that area in the future. Connect back into town.
That's what I, that was one of my concerns too, Ron, is that, okay, if you, because crossover Raccoon Creek, there's a lot of other farm land back there that eventually is probably gonna be, could be developed and then variance could lead to a could lead to a spot where, you know, we have a permanent break in the sidewalk, but it appears that we already do have a permanent break in the sidewalk. So in my mind, this doesn't really.
The, the variance, my only bugaboo that it always is with these dead-end sidewalks is can we turn it into straight then? And then put the handicap ramp right there where it hits the street and Buena Vista.
I think that's how it's gonna be, right, Jim?
What's that?
So the sidewalk will run into Edwards and there will be a ramp at the end?
Yes.
And aimed at what?
It'll, we'll, we'll make that determination there at that point in time. You might wanna turn it just so you walk off of the end of that sidewalk, so you can cross the street, street and go back the other sidewalk.
Right.
Buena Vista sidewalk, ADA compliant sidewalk on both sides of the street. I would think we would turn the ramp so you could cross the street instead of walking down on Edwards Road. I think it would be detrimental to have it go to Edwards Road.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance.
We're gonna open public comment on this and I wanna, I know that we have some of the public walking out. I just wanna thank you guys for stopping by.
Bailey, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think the application that we submitted funding for, for Edwards Road includes sidewalk, is that right?
Jim Leonard and I discussed this and he did not say one way or, one way or another. We were, our plan was to have curb and gutter. But there was, never been a discussion about sidewalk. I don't think the funding is for sidewalk.
I think it was curb and gutter for storm wa, storm water management, but I do not include it sidewalk.
Been granted the funds. It's not like we're applying for them. Like those funds have already been put into the scud doll.
For the sidewalk.
No, no, for the curb and gutter.
Right, that, that was. I don't think that's in the number.
We're gonna, we're gonna open up to public comment and we'll start with Marvin.
Folks aren't familiar with that area. First of all, Donnie's building some nice houses down there. We've got three lots down there that they haven't been built, able to build on because the sidewalks is so high. That one sidewalk, Jim, didn't you say is eighteen thousand?
Uh, yes.
Okay, when you get up to Chrissy King's house, the next one up, you're gonna have to buy some of her property that drops off twelve foot. You're gonna have to fill it. And it's gonna cost you a hundred thousand dollars to put a sidewalk across her two acres. Next acre, the next house, it'll probably cost you another fifty thousand. And my house, you can put it in if they don't charge me for it. That, we, we joined the New Albany Accord, which calls for rural development. I think Bailey can understand, explain that. That means ditches and curbs.
Open ditches.
Those, those lots that we're talking about there are all two-acre lots. And Diani, if you've driven down there, they're building a fine house. The thing that we've refused to let them do is build three houses down there that's costing the village about four or five thousand dollars a year in income tax because of the stupid thing on sidewalks. And I would suggest that you approve it, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Marvin.
So the Western Lincoln County Accord was signed between Johnstown, New Albany and Liberty Township. And it, it pretty much talks about preserving rural character. And it does talk about preserving the rural character of streets, so limited streetlights. You know, not too much development off of those selected rural streets, so sidewalks, we wouldn't consider sidewalks a rural street.
Well, I think this board's in the favor of approving the variance and time, it's an efficiency. If, if anyone has any public comment contrary to that, we, let's.
I think we're good.
I think we're good. I'll make a motion to approve the variance.
I'll second.
Ron.
Go ahead, Ron.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, Jesse Cobble.
Yes.
John Merriman.
Yes.
Ben Lee.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
I got everybody.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to zoning map amendment application twenty-twenty dash four-two-nine dash Z, three-sixty-one and three-seventy-three West Kishakon Street.
This is a map amendment request to change properties from UR one to central business. And I'm gonna pull up a map here. If you can see that, I can also pull it up on the contract website if you'd rather. So just let me know which one works best for you.
The next two from the east of the nursing home.
Yes, it's the two properties next to the nursing home, which if you, I'm not sure, I can't remember who was on planning and zoning at that time, but in two thousand and nineteen, we did approve a map amendment to change the nursing home property from UR one to central. Well, it's not, it's not technically central business. It's.
Village commercial.
Village commercial. So we did approve a map amendment for the nursing home to switch from UR one to village commercial and then these two properties rezoning to village commercial would just continue on that trend. Um, I do want you to think about the future land use map in which we identified US sixty-two as a sort of central business slash village commercial corridor. So approving this map change would follow along with the future land use map. And while these households are currently being used as single-family homes, they do follow along with the setbacks and the lot requirements that are put forth in, in village commercial. And I believe the applicant is on the call, so if, Sean, if you're there, I will let you talk as well.
I saw him earlier, but I don't.
I've been jumping around. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, that's good. Sorry. I, I apologize. I am not there. Uh, I am playing Mr. Taxi tonight with uh, my daughter at volleyball, my son at karate, and I am currently driving. I, I thought I would catch it early enough, but the, the excitement at the beginning of the meeting, the delayed thing, so I am currently in root to figure out. I apologize to the board and any members that may be there of the audience that are gonna have questions. I will do the best I can to answer any questions that anyone may have. Yes. Chairman Green and members of the board, Bailey, uh, stated it pretty, pretty nicely. Just kinda going along with the future land use map. I don't have any intention currently to change the use of those houses. If someone were to approach me, sure, but, but I've got tenants in both of those houses. And just, just trying to update some properties and, and take advantage of that opportunity for them to be possibly used as a, a business later. One insurance, oh gosh, I think he's from Erie Insurance, two years ago approached me about possibly having something at the time I didn't. In doing this application, the thought process was, hey, you know what? You know, five, ten years down the road, if that same question were to be posed, I could entertain the idea and at least, you know, see if, see if it works. But that's, that's it. I don't wanna bore you. You guys got a lot on the agenda. I'll let you fire away with questions and go ahead.
Bailey.
I would like to say just one thing. The purpose of village commercial is to sort of be a low-intensity commercial district, so not something as big as a Kroger or a, or a big superstore, but. So not something as big as a Kroger or a, or a big superstore, but something really where we see independent business owners and smaller business owners. Um, and we sort of see that as a, becoming a corridor. So something that people would still live in, but also would feel comfortable walking around in and visiting those businesses. So just so you're aware, um, that that's the purpose of that. And the kind, the confusion between central business and village commercial is that the future land use map identifies this as central business because we've had some confusion over the, um, wording of village commercial in the past. And so in the future land use map and the new zoning code, we tried to clarify that wording by using central business. That's the only, that's the only thing I wanted you to be aware of.
So with the central business, they're encouraged to keep the houses and keep everything.
It's just a rewording of village commercial.
Now, under the village commercial though, they're, they're encouraged to keep it looking similar to how it is now. And I understand obviously you're going to have to update it if there's a business and things like that. Um, kind of the opposite of, we'll, we're across the street, we just got that one back from business residential. Now these will be going to business.
Bailey, I have a, just a.
I went, I went through it, just, that was, I just wanted to clarify, I went through it earlier, but that was my, that was my number one question. I'd hate to see the character of the area change drastically. And I know we just got that business across the street back residential, now these are going, uh, commercial. So I just would, would want to see the character remain similar.
And in two thousand nineteen, actually, right after or right before we rezoned the nursing home lot, um, Ben and the people on planning and zoning at that time reworded village commercial a little bit to kind of make sure that the wording came to the character that we were really going for. So they took some allowed uses out, they put some of the permitted uses into conditional uses, um, just to make sure that it really was following along with the intent that we were going for.
Yeah, a lot of those high intensity uses are made to be conditional. Um, but, uh, yeah, and that was really a direct response to the nursing home. Just to make sure that if that building ever ceased to be a nursing home, that we, you know, hedged against ensuring that if anything else were to backfill, that it would be as intensive, uh, and no more than what that would be.
I have a couple of questions, um, so I think, like you said, it's, we want, this is kind of how we envisioned to be a commercial area. So I think that is completely appropriate. Logistically, if it's going to be zoned commercial, but there's people living there, how does he need to get a variance for that?
Do you want me to answer or you, you got it, Bailey?
I was asking Bailey, what the logistics of that was.
I'm sorry.
I'm understanding. So there would be additional use along with this, probably needs to be, would be, have to be approved along with this.
But he's, he's bothered in basically.
Gotcha, okay. Um, second question is, since it's on sixty two, um, obviously it's a high traffic area. Even though I envisioned it, we all envisioned this commercial, right? What, if we're, by changing this, what kind of approvals are you going to need in the future to, you know, to start a business there, right? You kind of, my concern is, okay, are we going to have a lot of high traffic stuff coming in on this without another round of review?
Um, if you look at the permitted uses in village commercial, what we tried to do when we rewrote this is really focus on businesses that were low impact on traffic. So, um, things like personal services where maybe only one person is visiting office at the same time. Or small cafes, we don't, we didn't allow outdoor seating, so a restaurant with outdoor seating wouldn't be allowed there, so no big, no
Okay.
Traffic like that. Try to kind of keep it pretty small where it's, where like only one or two people would be in and out at a time. Keep in mind too, that ODOT is currently working on widening roads, so hopefully that'll help with traffic. But, but you're right, we don't want to, you know, cause any more traffic problems, so, um, that's what village commercials, it's for. It's supposed to be kind of low intensity.
All right, anything, John? On, do you have anything on this one?
Yeah, I think the village's commercial, or village center zoning would give us the same protections pretty much as we have currently, uh, I.
All right, we will go ahead and open up the public comment. Go ahead.
Here.
Yes, we can.
Jim, uh, Jim Blair, I think, did Bailey help you work on the nursing home or was that all you?
Um. Bailey, you were here when we started on the nursing home, weren't you?
Yeah, I was.
Marvin, if you're talking, can you talk into the mic, please?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh.
It's an hour.
Real good there, and if somebody bought those in low impact, you lost a lot of traffic when Dr. Bright moved. You have the dentist next door, he has quite a few patients in and out, and I've never seen a traffic jam down there. And, uh, I, I, I think Sean's asking for the right thing. When you look at Sean's houses, there's one more residential house there, then there's a therapy clinic, there's a, another dentist's office. And, uh, another residence, and then on the corner you got the, uh, auto parts store.
And Marvin, on the other, on the other side of the nursing home, uh, going down the hill, we rezoned that to village commercial for Ann Evans, probably about four years ago.
There's three houses there.
Yeah. So.
So.
Yeah, I said we approve.
Thank you, I'll move to approve. Do we have pub, I'll move to approve if there's no other public comment.
We'll go ahead and close public comment, unless Sharon, you have anything?
Before we vote, that's okay.
All right, uh, Jesse has made the motion. A second.
And did you say you had a comment?
Yeah, I had a couple of comments before we vote, if that's okay.
Got to read them. Go ahead, Ben.
Um, just to go through and make sure that we're hitting the criteria for review, um, reading off those, uh, the relationship of the amendment to public health, safety and general welfare. Uh, I think it's okay and it meets those requirements. Um, compatibility of the proposed amendment to adjacent land use zoning, appropriate plans for the area. Cite the future land use map as well as the current zoning for adjacent properties, I think it meets that. Effects on the proposed, from the proposed amendment on access and traffic flow. Um, I think it, it meets that. I think the Route sixty two turn lane definitely, um, helps bolster the case, uh, for approving this. The relationship with topography and intended use to its implication or to its implications. I think that to everybody's point, you've talked here tonight, you've other, you've got other businesses in that space. Um, you've got other village commercial businesses in that space, so it meets that requirement. And the relationship with the proposed use, the adjacency of available services and the general expansion plans, again citing the future land use map. And as well as the argument that we had was switching over the parcel for the nursing home, I think it meets that requirement as well. So for me, it checks all the boxes, most importantly, it's adjacent to other property that is zoned village commercial. Uh, and I think it's in line directly with their future land use map, so, uh, I'm in favor of it. I just wanted to make sure that we hit those, uh, criteria for review on the record.
All right. Um, Jesse has made the motion, John has seconded, go ahead, roll call.
Jesse Cobble.
Yes.
John Merriman.
Yes.
Ben Lee.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Ron Day.
Yes.
All right, we will go ahead and move on to item number eight, zoning map amendment, application twenty twenty dash four three zero dash Z. Nine five seven one and nine six two nine, Johnstown Utica Road.
This map amendment is, um, for a parcel located to the north, uh, up in the north of Johnstown. Um, it's on Johnstown Utica Road past our industrial center. And the request is to change it, to change the property from light manufacturing, which it is currently zoned into commercial. Um, the property is currently you, being used for personal and business storage as well as a single family residence. And, um, going back to the future land use map, while it is zoned light manufacturing and the land across the street, um, on Sportsman Club Road is light manufacturing. The future land use map that we passed in twenty twenty identifies, uh, commercial, um, corridor along US sixty two to the north. So that did not include this parcel, but it included the parcels directly to the north of this one. Um, and being that it's a, you know, a triangle property across the street from Sportsman Club. It, being light manufacturing, there's not very much room there for light manufacturing, so, um, staff recommends approval of the map change.
And there is, in the future, that intersection is going to be changed. I'm not sure how it's going to be done or what's going to happen there, but, uh, it is, uh, on the ODOT shortlist, have something done to that intersection.
And the applicant is Mr. Stainer again, so if he's still on, I'll let him provide any extra comments.
Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
Sure. Once again, uh, Bailey kind of gave you the highlight reel. I, I don't know that I want to bore you with any statement that I'm going to have that aren't in the report already. Um, but, uh, but yeah, if, if you want to, I can try to answer any questions you may have and, uh, and just start off there.
What do you plan to put on that lot?
That's a great question. Um, nothing as of yet, so, I, I, once again, trying to clean some things up. Um, that property, and, and it's in the report, like I said, I don't want to bore you with it. The hierarchy system that was in place whenever, uh, it got annexed into the village, it was business, zone business when it was in Monroe Township. Um, whenever it got annexed into the village, they had a hierarchy system where you went after light manufacturing, you were allowed basically everything underneath of that. Uh, the village has changed that policy since that property got annexed. I would agree with that policy. You don't, you don't want to have just kind of the wild, wild west of, of zoning as far as, uh, multi-family and light manufacturing or commercial light manufacturing. So I think identifying the appropriate uses for the specific areas is, is the best procedure. What that did though is it left kind of our property hanging out there. Uh, Marvin went through the same situation with his trailer park and there's some other properties in town that can identify with the same situation. Whenever they annexed in, they were zoned in as light manufacturing, uh, rather than probably more of an appropriate zoning classification. So like I said, just trying to clean it up, uh, I don't have any immediate, uh, plans for that particular piece of property unless, unless you're looking to, to rent something. Uh, right now it's just storage unit. Um, and then one, uh, one fella has another, uh, garage. It, it, there's actually three electrical meters on the property, one for each of the, uh, the buildings that sit there. Uh, he, he has a lighting studio, um, so this is kind of his overrun with his lighting company and he keeps a lot of other odds and ends up because he lives in Johnstown, but his, his warehouse is in Miller's. Um, so, so the residents that live there, they just, they just leased a, a two-year lease with us. So we don't have any intention of, of, of doing anything with them. Uh, nothing immediate, uh, if, if, if I can give you just as much information as I have.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, Dem, you were saying something about ODOT?
Oh, at some point in time and Sean's well aware this too, ODOT wants to do something with that intersection there because of the angle. And, uh, maybe at some point in time, I don't know, it might get realigned, uh, with Kraus Olson over there. So we've, we've had lots of discussions about it, but never seen anything officially on paper.
Okay. But the rezoning on that wouldn't really affect any of that.
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect it.
Um, okay, um, any other, any other questions?
I'm sorry.
Ben.
I, I was, I was going to try to answer your question, Ryan, um, in regards to the intersection. Um, if you want, there is an email, I can email it to you, but it'd be kind of silly. Jim Leonard, I got the email from Jim Leonard, just for planning purposes, they've got a, a draft, uh, sketch as to what that inter, intersection, uh, improvement would look like. Bailey might even have that. I have it in my file, I could try to forward it over to you. But to, to describe it over the phone visually, if you're looking at that property, it's the westernmost part of it. They clipped that corner off and I would say probably come, uh, if I had to guess, maybe twenty-five feet, twenty feet away from the house with the road. Um, and just straighten out that intersection. So that's the sketch that, that I believe ODOT has done. Um, it might have been the county, I'm not sure, but that's the one that I have from Jim Leonard. Like I said, it may be on file where you can get it. If not, I can forward it over to you guys whenever I get home.
Okay. Uh, Ben or Ron, do you have anything on this?
The only concern I initially had when switching it over to GCC two is that would open up the door for multi-family. But if you look under the conditionals, multi-family, it will work on the slide anyway because of the setback comments. I think, I don't think I have any concerns on that now. I think it would probably be a good move on Sean's part.
Yeah, I would, uh, I would agree. I think it probably was just a minor oversight when going through the map. Um, and just looking at the gray block and keeping it the way that it was without consideration for that specific piece moving into commercial, so it makes sense. If you reference page seventy-eight of our comp plan, um, commercial land use is probably the best definition for that piece of parcel. Anyway, um, being intended for large scale commercial use, service, uh, businesses, professional offices, retail stores and entertainment. Um, more so than a, a light manufacturing or manufacturing designation. But to everybody's point, the location is a little difficult with, uh, respect to that intersection. But again, going through just the criteria for review, uh, relationship to the public health, uh, safety, general welfare, I think it meets that compatibility to adjacent land use. I think we've called that out, uh, but I think that adjacent land use is probably more relative to the future land use. Map designation for those other parcels on, on sixty-two going towards Sunbury. Um, I think, uh, or not Sunbury, but just going towards out of town. Uh, affects proposed amendment on access and traffic flow, that's the only flag that I have here, but I think you're going to have that issue with, uh, any thing that you put there as well as what's there right now, just because of how that road is designed. Effects the proposed amendment, uh, to traffic close, the relationship with topography to attend, its intended user, uh, to its implications. Uh, I, again, I don't think it's any better or worse than what's there right now or how it's zoned currently. Uh, relationship to the proposed use, the adequacy of available services and the general expansion plans. Again, I think it fits better with respect to the future land use as a commercial property than it does as, as light manufacturing, which was already talked about. So in my opinion, it, it meets the requirements, it checks the boxes and I would be in favor of, um, approving it.
All right, um, let's go ahead and open the public comment.
Uh, Marvin Block. Sean and I fell under the same scope that the, the trailer park fell under one time, when I was annexing everything. They annexed it light manufacturing and they went down through the scale. Remember how that went, Jim?
Yes.
Uh, and that's what happened to that when Polly done it and Bailey's totally correct, it's not big enough for manufacturing unless you do many homes on it. Uh, but I think, I think Sean deserves the, the chance to get that changed. It took forty years to get the trailer park rezoned. Now, I know the trailer park's still there, most of you don't even see it, but you got two good businesses out in front of it now. You could get another good business over there where Sean's at. Uh, I, I think it's a wise decision for him to change it. Thank you.
All right, anything else, guys?
Nope. Okay, I'll go ahead and make a, uh, motion to approve. A second. Roll call.
John Merriman.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Brian Green.
Yes.
Von Dane.
Yes.
Dusty Capo.
Yes.
All right, we will go ahead and move on to the zoning inspector report for December.
Thank you, Paul. I just wanted to interrupt again. Thanks, Chairman Green and members of the board. I appreciate it. And Marvin for your comment.
Thank you, Sean.
I, I just, one thing I want to, it's not in the report, just the first thing in the report. 11-785 Johnstown Utica Road. That, and it kind of goes along with the discussion we just had. It looks like in 2005, that property was annexed into the village. I think it came in with the Beazer Home Property and of course, it's zone light manufacturing. And it's got storage units on it. It's also got a contractor's storage site at the far back of it. And then there's the old barn on it where that, that was where they, at one time it was a cabinet shop. Now it's been used as an archery range. Well, there's five pieces of property there. One of them is not in the village. It's in the township, which makes it more complicated. But there was one address for five parcels. 11-785. Well, two of them have recently sold. And I'm working with the county and some of the property owners. And I'm assigning new addresses to it, but we're going to change it from Johnstown Utica Road to West Kishakton Street. So there'll be new addresses assigned for each partial that's there. There's a sign out front. Or sale sign and has the address numbers on it. And they didn't leave any room for expansion if any of them ever get split or whatever. So I'm, I'm going to stick to those numbers. And according to the Realtor, all those were all recorded at the county. Well, none of them was ever recorded at the county. They just put the numbers on there, but, and then they sold them. But they sold them as Johnstown Utica addresses and not West Kishakton. So it's a huge mess, but I hope to have the letter written now, maybe even this week. And working, like I said, with the county and the 911 center, they will all have West Kishakton addresses. Denny Dotson is the last property to have a West Kishakton address. For marijuana, it's Johnstown Utica. So those, that, there'll be five new numbers for that property.
So they sold those and the deal's closed and they didn't change the address or something?
Three of them have, three of them on the auditor's webpage all have the same number. Three different parcels, two, two different owners. Pardon me? Yeah, on the sign, good on the sign.
Anything else, anything else on the report? Anything major coming in?
The nursing home is planning to open sometime in the spring.
Okay.
So Jim and I had a call with them and that's exciting. And I'll let you know when we get a definite date. Right now we just have sometime in the spring.
They should have a webpage up running in February. I got two calls recently of people that want to move in there, that own homes in Johnstown now.
Okay.
And, and then I got two calls from people looking for a job there. So the, the two people that did call me that want to move in there, I know them both very well. So I gave, I hooked them up with contact information that hasn't been made public yet.
Okay.
I thought it was appropriate.
We have contact information, so if you guys know, or if anybody asks you, you can send them our way.
Right, we will hook them up. We just haven't advertised, put it out in public yet.
Okay. So a couple of questions I had on this, so 11-785 there, they got the fence.
Yes.
It's going back there by the archery range. I know that that fence is currently, do we have anything for business fencing?
Well, they can do up to an eight-foot tall fence.
Okay.
Yes.
I know that, and that's something that I want to, I have a list of things I want to touch on going through this year, but I think that's something too. For business fencing, I think we need to update that to be more on par with other, with other municipalities. Because a wooden picket fence, and not that, I know that they're allowed to have it, but wooden picket fence in that area, especially when there's going to be an ACE in front of there. Trying to have a nice area and we're just hoping that this guy keeps that fence up. And running equipment through there and things like that, leaves coming through the area. I know that's going to be an issue.
So, um, we don't, as of right now, we don't permit fences based on like business. We permit them based on what it's zoned for and that property is zoned as light manufacturing.
He could have had an eight-foot fence.
And that's, that's what I'm saying. I, I know what we have on the books now and that's where we're at. I, I think we need to see something different as far as maybe a chain link fence with one of the, with one of those net, you know, mesh type fabrics over it. Or the, the plastic slats that you see go through there. Something a little more robust that's not going to.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not happy with, I'm not happy with the fence. I'm not happy with the quality of it at all, to be honest with you. I told him it probably blow down in two years.
Saying it already looks bad.
Well, I just, no, it, right now looks fine, but he also put a foot over onto the wrong, the, the front property. So that's an issue. He's going to have to remove it.
Cause I saw that and then I saw in your report that you said the concrete posts were already in by the time you got there.
Yes.
Okay.
He, he did it over Thanksgiving.
Okay.
And he's very, very difficult to deal with. He doesn't speak English. Well, I don't know how he runs his company, Renee Costello. And he's got landscape trailers and equipment and backhoes and skid steers, but he doesn't speak English.
Right. And that's fine. I'm just saying, I think that's something that we need to talk about this year as far as commercial fencing and requirements for that.
Now, if you look over on Commerce at the fences there that we allowed for the marijuana-related businesses, which was required by the state, the properties had to be secured. All the property had to be secured and it had to have electronic gates. We did come up with a design for fences there. Jim Linner and I, we kind of picked from other parts of the country. And if you go by and you'll see that those are eight-foot tall and they're all black.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I'd like to see more of. And it doesn't have to be an aluminum fence with a mechanized gate. I'm not asking.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're very expensive fences.
Especially with a landscape company, because you're going to run into it with stuff. It's going to get beat up. I get it, but.
Even Andy Joseph was surprised about the cost, so.
So when you pulled up over there and he had the fences, the fence already in the ground, what did you tell him?
Uh, I told him, you know, he said, well, he left a message.
Okay.
And I, he did, he did leave a message on Sunday.
That he was just going to start without the, without the whole.
He wanted me to come and inspect the holes.
Yeah.
And I went out Monday and the fence was done.
Yeah. I mean, we're within our rights to make him tear that fence down, especially now that it's off of his property line.
Well, he's going to, that's the thing. He's going to have to move it a foot back. And he hasn't responded. I've contacted him. He hasn't responded yet.
Okay.
Pardon me?
I would definitely, if that's, if that's how it's going to be, I would definitely inspect those holes. Cause the next thing is, he'll have a foot and a half deep hole on this.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what he's.
First time we get a windstorm, it's going to be over. And I would definitely like to set the tone now before we get ACE and we get some other businesses in that area.
He also sent me a picture.
Do right now.
He also sent me a picture of the building it was starting to build. And I said, oh no, that's not.
Without a permit on the building.
Without anything. And I've run into this quite a few times with people that have moved here that just don't understand. But, but then again, he's in the business of installing commercial landscaping.
Yeah, there's, if you're in that business, there's an understanding.
Yeah. The building is not, nothing, I've stopped that. Nothing's happening with the building right now.
Okay. We definitely need to look into that one. Now the permits, I saw that we're going to do the online permits. How does that system work?
Well, Bailey and I are just learning it. In fact, we have a class tomorrow. This will be our fifth class. So she can probably explain it better than I can.
We just put our permits online and let's say you wanted to apply for a shed permit. You can log into OpenGov. One, so like one login will work anytime you want to submit an application. So you commit, submit as many applications as you want under your login and fill out the form. Right now we're building those forms on the online platform.
Okay.
And that'll come directly to me. So as soon as you hit submit, I get a notification that we got a new form. And it's the same way as we had it before. We won't review it until you pay for it. But it's kind of nice that, because right now we don't do online payments for zoning. And this is going to allow us to do online payments for zoning, which is really nice. And it's going to allow us to keep all of our zoning applications in one place, which I also think is really nice. And I, I'm really excited because right now if Jim and I want to have our engineer, engineers review something, we either have to drive over the plans or scan the plans in and send them over to the engineer and they review them. And then they either call me or they send them back to me. So it can be kind of a long process. But now we can give our engineers like an authorized login. And I can just, the same day I get the plans, I can send a message right to the engineers, please review this. So that's kind of nice too. It should allow us to be a lot more streamlined in our zoning applications. And ultimately, I'd like to have all of our zoning applications be online. So it's pretty exciting.
Yeah.
Right now that we set, right now we build a file for everything we do. Now, if I have a file on an address and it say it's a new house over here on Bontrager and Cochran Crossing, and I get a fence permit, well, I'll put it in there. Or I get any, any type of permit I would get for that house, I'd put it in there. But you, every, every address in Johnstown, we have to build a file on. And hopefully we'll get, I have nine file cabinets and I try and send them out. And it's an ongoing task. I have, since I'm working at home, I have a stack this big right now to file. And so this will eliminate most of that.
And I think that Dana is getting us hooked up with a different company who's going to allow us to scan all of our old documents in. Because we've also had a problem with that. Like we'll be looking for our document from 10, 15 years ago. And you know, there have been staff changes and council changes and nobody's really sure where the document is. So this way hopefully we can get all those documents scanned in and organized in one place so that we'll know where everything is.
Someday they'll check compliance. Get that far. Then you just have to okay the.
Marvin has some plans from like 1985. Yeah, every, so OpenGov, everything is backed up on the cloud. And then when I asked, you know, what if you go out of business, we own, we still own all that data. I'm not as clear on the, on the software that Dana is using. But we had a call with them at the, at the end of December. So hopefully we'll be learning more about that too.
I, I go frequently to deliver plans. Well, no, they, they bring them in my office, maybe 10 sets of blueprints and then we hand them out. But then the ones that go to our contract engineer, when I first started doing this, he was in Worthington. I took him over to Worthington and the office I'm using now is in Gehanna, which isn't too bad. But I deliver plans frequently. Now, those are on commercial jobs. We, we don't do anything like that for residential, other than for if we were doing a new development.
Yeah, but now we can just scan them over directly on the computer, so.
But we, I, we don't, I don't know, we haven't really set a goal to start it up because there's a lot to learn. And we have to set up this payment process and then educate the, this, last year I did 459 individual permits. I processed, processed them, signed them and made the copies and distributed them 459 times. And that's probably the most ever that's been permitted in Johnstown since its existence. Cause we built 80 new houses last year.
Right. Yeah, yeah, they're definitely going to have an uptick.
And each house has four permits.
Right. Wait till they all start building fences, decks.
Oh yeah, well that's.
They're all going to start building fences, deck sheds, stuff like that. And then I noticed going down through here, 101 Valley View, you said you had a question from a Realtor.
Yes.
What happened on that one?
It was basically, it was a zoning question about how it was zoned, that area there. It was the same question that you get if the house is destroyed by fire.
Okay.
How long do you have to rebuild it and if the zoning changes?
Yeah. Okay. And I noticed 230 Crest View, one on the corner up there with the RV. Want to see what the progress was on that?
Well, every, the, the parking in the yard is stopped. The RV's been pushed back to the edge of the driveway. He took a couple pickup truck loads of junk away from there. And right now I was going to leave it alone. There's swing set and a trampoline is there, but obviously there's nothing that can be done about that.
Right.
They're not parking in the yard anymore.
Now, did you take it up with the resident and the?
I took it up with the property owner.
Okay. That was my question on rentals and stuff like that.
Go to the property owner.
Okay. And then if they, if the property owner doesn't say anything, you go to the tenant?
No, I go to court.
Okay. You don't deal with the tenant as much then?
Uh, I try to avoid dealing with the tenant as much as possible because that's when you get threatened. I've had weapons pulled on me a couple of times and it was always when I was dealing with the tenant.
Okay.
So I moved away from that. It's not worth it.
Okay. The other thing I had on here was Slaybaw with the loads of dirt they're bringing in.
Yes.
Were they using those, are they going to use those onsite or are they using them other places?
Right now, they're not piling the dirt. They're, they have a dozer sitting, two dozers sitting there. We have a dozer in Ataco. And when the loads come in, they, they level it out. They're building it up, I don't know, four feet tall.
Okay. Now, is it all topsoil or is it?
All looks like topsoil, yeah.
Okay. They're not.
They were hauling dirt all day today.
Oh, they already started it?
Oh yeah, they'll, they'll probably be finished by the end of the week.
They're building, they're bringing in 250 dump truck loads.
That's not a lot of dirt. I mean, it seems like a lot, but truly not.
Right.
You can get 75 loads out of a big basement, so.
Okay. As long as they're cleaning up, they have a plan to clean the road up and notify traffic patterns and things like that?
Yeah, it was fine. I was, I was actually back on the site today and it's fine. They, they've extended their street and I can drive back now. The curb's in on Fondrest, which goes back all the way to Atrium, to the side of the Atrium building. There'll be, there'll be houses back there. Their backyards will go towards the Atrium building.
All right.
Real close to the pond. Real close to Atrium's pond. Yeah, it's real close to their pond. It'll be, there'll be nice slots. And even there, I mean, Atrium's quiet place and you're just looking at that big white wall. So I, and it's wooded between you and them.
I asked Jim how close it was to the ponds back there and if they'd put a silt fence up around it.
They, they haven't yet because they haven't started digging on the lot yet. They're, they're just grading right now. The, the only place they're actually working is where they're dumping the topsoil.
So they're bringing, they're bringing those loads of topsoil in basically for storage until they can use it there.
Yep.
But they haven't told you about if they're, because what I don't want is our neighborhood over there getting used as a storage facility for their other projects.
Well, we don't know that. I mean, anytime you have a large development, I mean, look at, I'll give you an example. Leafy Dell, they had 3,500 loads of dirt stored in Leafy Dell. And that's where the new school's at. And they hauled them all out. And actually a lot of them were used for the new school. They were used for, and to build up the Ball Diamond, build up the property for the new diamond. So it's just a, any development, Pulte, they have dirt stored right now too on property, on property.
Right.
But.
Right, it's, it's dirt. Now, did they bring that dirt in or was that stuff they raked up from one side of the property?
That stuff that they brought, they had all in property, just leveling out things. And in this case here, since they're bringing in topsoil, with Slaybach, they do something very unusual. When they build their new house, they cover your whole lot with topsoil.
Yeah, which is nice.
They usually buy it, they have the slinger trucks come in. Now they're going to have it on site.
Which is nice because you actually get grass in it.
Yeah, you do. You really do.
What I just don't want to see is, is our, is our construction sites, we allow them in, they truck dirt in, use us. Use us as a storage facility for a couple of months and then take it somewhere else.
Well, it's a concern, yeah, but it.
And then, you know, that dirt washes down into other parts of the property. Now, it's dirt, I get it, you know, there's probably, if it was fill, there's. There could be other products in it, but if it's topsoil, it's topsoil. But there is going to be stuff running onto other parts. It's also going to affect water runoff. So as long as it's not going to run on to people's property and cause other problems downstream.
Well, right now we're attached, there's nothing around it. It just didn't feel.
Okay.
But that's a good concern.
And then I have the Pulte permits. Did they find anything as far as fire hazards over there?
You mean, were the two houses burnt down?
They had, yeah, was there, was there anything that, I mean, what did they rule on that? What did they find?
It was a salamander.
Um, I had a meeting with Pulte last week. They said the Ohio State Fire Investigator is still working on it.
That site manager told me it was a salamander that caught on fire, so.
Okay, and what's their, what's their plan? Yeah.
Is taking care of all repairs and has been working with homeowners. That's what I've heard.
Did they say they were going to tear down the other house, Bailey?
Um, they just said they're work, Pulte's covering all repairs, so.
I think if I was the homeowner, I'd want a new house.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was my question on if we need to look into that any further, if they had a plan, if they came.
It's all up to them. I mean, the permit will just roll over for the two that were there. I mean, it that they it'll keep the same permits, nothing changes.
They seem to be working on it, though.
Okay. And then as far as the traffic study, have they done anything with that or a traffic addressing the traffic issue into the shopping center there?
They met with us last week and. Honestly, it's going to be hard for them because we need ODOT's plans.
Okay.
We don't have those yet. We should have them. But it's hard to communicate with. They don't really give us a timeframe, but I'm anticipating those sometime in the spring. And then once we get those, then hopefully Pulte can work off of those to put a plan together themselves.
Okay.
Because what I don't want to happen is that Pulte spends a lot of money to put something in and then ODOT comes through and tears it all out.
I'm less concerned with ODOT or with Pulte spending money than us getting stuck with the problem down the road.
I understand, but.
Especially when they've agreed to something already.
I understand, but also ODOT, Sunberry had this problem with ODOT as well. ODOT traffic lights have to be warranted.
Okay.
Which means that if you're putting something on an ODOT road, then ODOT has to agree to it. It's not going to be an ODOT road much longer once the city. Comes, once we become a city.
Right.
Yeah, ODOT's kind of hard. So I think that we should be getting ODOT's plans here pretty soon. And then we'll send those over to Pulte.
Did Jim Leonard, because he was supposed to meet with them.
We met with them last week.
Is there, he didn't give you anything, any details or anything on what they were thinking?
ODOT?
Yeah.
I think the only thing we've received from them is a list of signs that have to be moved. Eliminated behind each along the road.
So is there, um, is there, will they have to come back before our board for any approvals before they can, they continue to this phase two?
No, that's what I, that's what I made that point.
We told Pulte they're not allowed to build any homes other than like. They're not allowed to build any homes in phase two. They don't have permission to build anymore.
Will they have to come before us to get permission or you just you guys will give it to them?
Village manager will do it.
Yeah, it won't come before us again. That's why I made that point when we voted on that plat change back then. Because it won't come to us for approval again. It will be done with.
Did we vote for that, we approved that plat change?
We did, with the caveat of they would come in and talk about. They would talk about traffic patterns and things like that. I mean, I'm not for a stoplight over there.
Was that they would investigate.
Yeah, he got, he got us on that one then, I guess. If we did, if he hasn't gotten, have to come back here, he's not going to do anything.
As as long as.
I didn't realize that.
Do it at at the staff level.
Traffic light will be, some kind of traffic control will be put in.
I mean, I don't, I don't care if it's a stoplight. It doesn't matter to me.
Two thousand and seven, that must be upheld.
Okay.
Yeah, so something will be there.
As long as we're holding to that agreement, I'm I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure that we don't let them get too far down the road. And then we get stuck with the problem later on. I mean, if the spend some money, build something.
No light goes, then I'll be even happier, so.
Yeah, I don't think a light is a good idea because there's going to be a light down there by Witz, right? Is is what they're talking about or I have heard, there's going to be a a light through there because we had talked at the last, we had.
The only light will be at Bigelow.
Oh, Bigelow, okay. That's two pretty close lights, though. I wouldn't really be in favor of that.
Bigelow, the issue there is the hill. That's the issue. The light at the bottom of the hill and and in the wintertime, it can be very detrimental, so.
As much, as much as we don't like the light, they got it approved by this board a long time ago before we were all around, right?
I would not have recommended that when I was here, but.
I have, there's not much we can do about it now, it seems like.
Always.
Marvin, do you have anything on that?
Well, I.
Oh, sorry, Ben.
I think Bailey and and Jim both has tried to work with them in the shopping center on an alternative to a light there. And just haven't seemed to get them both together. You think that's going to happen, Jim?
No, I don't, I don't, they, they just don't seem to want to go that direction.
We told them again last week that we'd, we'd support that, but Altera really is the one who has the ultimate say and nobody really seemed to get them.
They don't even want to talk about it.
Are we able to facilitate a conversation at all?
We tried, we put the parties together. Send them, actually, I sent Altera, there was a conversation that Carol Van Deest had had with with them. And then I got a, Jim Leonard made a map of how it would work. And I sent that to Altera and asked them to, if they would, they wanted to discuss it and they wouldn't even contact me back. So I I gave all that information to Pulte and then Pulte contacted them and they were told the same thing. So that's the last conversation I had about, it's been about three months ago.
Did Pulte offer any money up for the? The passage.
I don't know. I mean, I didn't get into that part, but I, you know, obviously there's a financial. There should be some type of financial agreement where Altera would get compensated.
Sure.
Need to be converted to a public road.
Yeah.
You'd think they'd want to get rid of it, though, because isn't there a huge right of way? They can't really do anything with that property.
We could take it into my domain, couldn't we, Bailey?
Could.
It's a mess, but.
I don't think so because they have, you have another alternative. You have the.
No, that's true.
You can't do that unless there's no other way to go. And they have, we have another way to go.
Jesse, I think the condition that we had with the plats. Was that they would investigate the alternative proposal that we gave them, which is the one we're talking about with Altera up to sixty-two. Um, I think what they said on the record was that they were still committed with moving forward to. The agreement with putting something in at Bigelow and sixty-two. But like we're saying tonight and like we said then with the plat, really, nobody really wants to see another light. There at Bigelow if you can feed it into the one there at Wendy's, so. They acknowledged that they still had that agreement to uphold on their end. Um, but I think the the condition was to investigate that alternative, which doesn't sound like it's coming to fruition.
And and I tell you, I think they've, ODOT's run into some serious issues with the property owner of Wendy's. Wendy's does not own their land. And the person that does have it is not interested in doing any of this. So I was told that by a third party just this week.
But they're, but they're still gonna, we're still going to cut through to go over to Thorpe's and all that from Wendy's.
And that's what the property owner owns Wendy's does not want. He doesn't want that.
Okay, that's still in the process of happening.
That'll be, he might be holding out so he could get up more compensation.
We don't have plans yet.
We don't have any.
That's what we voted on. We voted on.
ODOT's plans and projects, not ours.
So that's what they initially proposed, ODOT did. And they talked to the property owner that owns Wendy's property.
Right.
And he don't want anything to do with it. And so I don't know what they're doing.
When we did the lot split there of Coglin over there, that was all part of it.
Yes, we used that as a reason.
But now you're saying that it's not going to happen.
Well, no, I don't know. I don't want to say that. I'm just saying that it's unresolved.
Okay. What do you, I know, I don't know that everybody that's here was on zoning then. I know Ben was on there. Do you have any thoughts on that, Ben?
Yeah, I think at the time we were using that as a concept and, you know, that that would be the best option for that space because you would. Eliminate and consolidate a curb cut off of sixty-two in the name of safety. But I think that was a conception drawing that we had, nothing that was approved or anything like that. Um, at this point, I would say, I mean, I I think that's obviously the best route to go is to combine that. Light to have a service road quote unquote, to be able to get back to those other parcels, the more. Curb cuts you can eliminate or consolidate on sixty-two, I think the better it's going to be for traffic flow anyway. However, if you do have a turn lane installed there, um, like what they're going to do with this next phase. You know, I I think that's going to mitigate and it's only going to help, but will it be the best possible solution? No, but I think we're working under the assumption because it makes the most logical sense. To have a through cut between Wendy's and. That property over there that used to be Coglin.
Yeah, and you can't box in the property that Coglin still owns there. That's a very valuable lot. And it could have more, I mean, there's multiple businesses that at some point in time might be interested in that. And to put that traffic out of there onto a small service road, it has to be able to handle a larger volume of traffic, so. ODOT's got their hands full. It's the same way with the signs that we have in front of Thorpe. Can't put up a permanent sign for anything yet because we don't know where the roads want to be.
That that piece of parcel is difficult, well, the two at this point, just. Because of that aspect, because of that intersection, it's just. Yeah, until you have the ODOT plan in place, you really can't move forward with much of anything. It's kind of the the missing piece of the puzzle to kind of continue that conversation, but. It's challenging. There's a lot of potential for that Coglin dealership lot. So hopefully we, the outcome is the most logical solution.
All right, um, anything else on the report, anybody? We're good on that. You guys have anything on the report? Okay. So moving on then. Where are we? So we'll move on to our twenty twenty-one goals. Um, other than end COVID, what else do you guys have?
Our two biggest goals over the next two months are to finish design standards and finish the zoning ordinance. So those need to be number, numbers one and two.
All right.
I am.
Okay. Yeah, we, that's what we have on the last page. You're moving.
So I think what I'm going to do, basically throw everything at me. I'm going to type them all down. And then I'm going to bring the typed list back next meeting and you guys can kind of. Rank them all and decide like, maybe we don't need to keep this one or maybe we just combine it with something else.
Okay.
We can do that.
All right, so working off of this list, you moved zoning code from Q three to Q one.
Yeah.
Incubator Business Zone, that is definitely something from the comprehensive plan that we liked. Definitely want to talk about it. I don't know that it's Q two.
I think the CIC may be more applicable for the incubator business zone conversation.
We can talk about nice things and future use, but we can't really do anything with it yet.
I I might take the incubator space off for the time being until it's vetted. Through the Community Improvement Corporation because I I know that that's a priority that they're working on. Or if you want to keep it on, maybe make it a lower priority. Conditional upon further conversation within the CIC would be my suggestion.
Let's keep it on there because it's it's something we spent a lot of time talking about, but well, yeah, we'll just move it way down the list, in case something happens. And then, so the commercial and residential design standards. That'll be Q two, right?
Design standards should be Q one.
That'll be Q one.
Design standards needs to be one of the first things we do in twenty twenty-one.
I'm for it. Remove all annexation policy, that's what I missed. We're gonna.
I think we did that.
Yeah.
Can we check that off?
We can check that off. And then, um, the design standards, yes, so they're two incubators, stretch goal pretty much. Comprehensive plan, we were. We already did that.
Have I done?
Yeah. Then ADUs, ADUs. So in council, they tabled that, right, Ben?
Yeah, the ADU ordinance was introduced and then it was tabled. At the last meeting. I initiated the the tabling and asked for it to be tabled because I think what we need to do. Based off a lot of feedback over the winter break here that we had. Is I think there are some additional standards that need to be investigated that also need to be a higher priority on our list with respect to. Defining really accessory units period, maybe more explicitly. As well as accessory. You know, accessory structures, accessory buildings, accessory dwelling units. I don't. Know if we actually have a definition for accessory dwelling units. What a permanent or or semi-permanent or, you know, mobile accessory structure might be. And that's speaking to say a shed with a foundation or without a foundation. And then lot coverage and things of that nature, I think all play into. Topics that we discussed within the conversation around accessory dwelling units. But I think even independent of that conversation have merit with discussing. Kind of filling in maybe some gaps within our current zoning code to those items. Um, and I think they they stand to be addressed sooner rather than later because, just because of the sheer number of requests, like Jim said, four hundred and fifty. You know, permits and a lot of those are items that, you know. Could or maybe or shouldn't, but should be counted towards, you know, lot coverage percentages for these different parcels, so. I think that maybe needs to be a priority level two to investigate, if not to continue to progress the conversation around ADUs. But at least fill in the gaps within our current code, independent of anything else.
So at this point, we've already passed ADUs as as we debated. It's with council right now and tabled. Obviously, some things have come to light over the break here. At this point. Would we just come up with a recommendation for council and they can amend at their level or would they just kill it? And it comes back here, we amend it.
Wrong, but I think that you can recommend edits to the ordinance. Anything can be edited before it's passed.
Yeah, right. And it wouldn't come back here, we'd just make recommendations on edits.
Yeah, I think what would need, would, in my suggestion, the way that I'm looking at it, is the ordinance itself. I think stands by itself and can stay tabled as long as it needs to stay tabled, but the changes to. Some of these ancillary, you know, tertiary items that have to do with that. Can be suggested as text edits to the current code. And considered and either passed or not passed before the ADU conversation comes off the table. For a vote again, so that when and if, and just say, for example, ADUs, it comes up and it's passed. If it is passed, that it's passed with these codified text edits already in place.
Right.
To ensure there isn't any unintentional consequences based off of what the ADUs might bring forth, so in terms of lock.
I just want to pass through with standard operating procedure, whatever that may be. I'm for the edits.
Yeah, it can stay tabled for as long as it needs to stay tabled.
Okay. So we'll move that. You want that to be in Q one? I think we already have a lot to discuss, so.
My suggestion might be. My suggestion might be because that is a, a pending item with council. Um, and it was a carryover from last year, that that has maybe moved up to one, because I think a lot of those conversations we can probably have within a meeting. Um, and I think however we break up the other two pieces with design standards and zoning code. Um, we can have those conversations in conjunction with, but I think the ADU piece maybe is a little bit more timely. Um, just because there's, there's pending legislation on the table with, with council. I think they all have merit. But I, I really don't see us getting through design standards and zoning code in the next three months as much as we want to. Um. But I, it's, it's, it's aggressive.
I put zoning ordinances on Q two.
Okay.
So that would be my.
What do you guys think on that? Are you good with that?
You say Q two Bailey?
Let's go, what, what's?
We're just coming up with a priority list. Oh, I cut you off Ben, I'm sorry.
Nope, I'm good.
All right, um, and I know in, just kind of talking to you guys, everybody on zoning, I think we're all pretty good. From where we, we've come a long way in a year, so I think everybody's got their ideas and uh, where they want to be. Um, just some ideas that I had and, you know, I know you guys probably have lists too, and I want you to read through them, but. Design review board was my biggest priority, um, just because of the looming developments we have coming, requests we have coming, Jim's getting inundated. So obviously Jim needs some framework to operate in, um, you know, he's telling us we need more teeth, we need to give him more teeth. Um, just on some of these things.
I, uh, the Ace Hardware building is going to be eighteen thousand square feet.
Yeah.
That's a big building, and uh, he, I talked to him about design standards and. I hope that we have them in place so I can give them to him to look at.
Do you know what the one in New Albany is?
Much smaller, this will be his biggest hardware.
Is that the one that he's building out on sixty-two? Dude, what are they gonna do with the old one after that? Do they know yet?
You mean Shaw's Hardware? It'll go back on the market, it, I, I get, it'll be up to the family whether they want to lease the building again or. Yeah, that's what I thought they'd do, so.
So I have the design review board, I mean, from what I've read in the design review, we need to make it a lot more specific. If you go down through the different types of areas that it has in there, there's a lot of copy and paste. So I, I would like to see it, you know, way more what we need and.
We paid OHM fifty thousand dollars to read that document.
I know, that's what I mean, I want to get our fifty thousand dollars out of it. Um.
I don't feel like there's a lot in there that really defines. The visual representation of Johnstown, I'll be completely honest with you. So.
I think we're there, so we need to carve that up and, and make it, make it fit us. Um, and then the uh, the minimum standards, I think we need to focus on that too this year. Uh, as far as going through properties and enforcing what's already on the books. Um, you know, I have several properties listed, we've brought up, and I think we've all done a, a decent job. We're not going after minor things, we're going after missing roofs, we're going after boarded up windows. You know, really, really unsafe sidewalks, things like car, dead cars, that's what we're here to go after, we're not. We're not here to go after smaller things, but uh, Jim, I wanted to ask you what our current strategy was for finding those issues? And uh, how we could beef that up?
Um, I, either I get a complaint or I find them myself. Most of them I find myself.
Okay.
So, uh, especially the cars, people here just don't seem to complain about cars, they get so used to them. And so I, I see them and I keep my eye on them and, uh, there's no activity and I go after the car.
Okay.
I think I've removed maybe three hundred and fifty.
You'd say you, it's more just like, you just, if you're on the way through town and you see them, you.
I kind of, I kind of patrol different sections of, uh, I don't know what word to use, uh, of the town.
Okay.
Each day of the week, uh, if, that I can get out, I can't get out every day because of, have office work. But I take sections and do the sections and keep a list. And then I, next time I go back, if the car, the vehicle is still there, then I start making inquiries about it.
Okay.
I'll tag it, I have a special tag I had made, I put on the windshield.
And then I, one question I had on here, I already kind of asked it earlier, how you deal with rentals? I know we have that rental registry.
Uh, that has never been uh, kicked off.
And I, and I would like to get that kicked off. Go ahead, Teresa.
When we first got started, we generated a list of all the rentals from our, uh, based on our database of water and sewer accounts. So. I think. Everybody just got really busy.
Yeah, we did.
There's a letter that needs to be written. Jim said he was gonna r- write it, but I, it has fallen off radar. He's had other pressing things to do, but I'm with, you know, we can pick it back up and get the letter writ, written, just explaining. You know, the rules and giving an example of the form, we have all that ready, it just needs to go out to notify. Uh, people, people that we know of.
And we did this before with our property maintenance code, which we established three years ago. Uh, we, but we sent letters, or sometimes I hand delivered them to businesses. Uh, properties, we, we zeroed right in on South Main Street, uh, the heart of Johnstown. And zeroed in on the property owners for the, that district. And then uh, s- some outside of that district we hand mailed to. And just told them that the new property maintenance code existed and, and what it's about and how they could go online and look at it. And but, and the rental, rental registry, we wanted to be able to do the same thing. It's a big deal to get started, it really is.
Okay. No, I mean, I, I get it, we took time to pass it, it's on the books, I just, I want to see us go through it. And it makes everything easier, because if there's tenants that are causing problems and you don't have the. Means to get a hold of the property owner, it more than likely won't give us all.
And the har- hardest ones to find out what, who to go to are the foreclosures, and I don't know. Uh, I, I don't have a good answer for that one, no one does.
Right, and if we get, if we get the info upfront, it's a lot easier to find it than to start from scratch. So at least it gives you a lead to go on. Um, I do know that there is a couple of properties that I saw, and I'll send you a list. Just driving around and also driving down behind um, the nursing home. Just kind of drive down behind there and check some things out, I, I saw some property.
On Lakeview?
Um, yeah, yeah, I think that'd be Lakeview.
Yeah, I've, I've had lots of issues on Lake, many, many issues.
So I kind of saw that, if I was the nursing home, you know, I know that we hounded the nursing home about some things and. You know, when they were coming in, we asked them to go through their property and what everything was going to look like, and I just expect the same from everybody else, so.
One thing you always want to remember, uh, and you, and now, now we can see from the nursing home, being back behind the building. You can see in the rear yards, technically, unless we see it, visually can see it. We weren't, we can't even investigate it, we're not supposed to investigate. You gotta see it. Or smell it, if it's a, if, if it's a case like that, on a complaint. If you have a complaint, you can ask the person to provide photographs, maybe he lives next door and can look into the backyard. So I wo- I try and work around that a lot, and I do, and I've, I've only been called on it one time, so I'm not afraid to do it.
Okay. Do you have something on that Marvin?
I, I got a question for Bailey and Jim, I don't know if it's even legal, I'm not trying to take anything away from them.
Use your mic.
Use your microphone.
What, what would you, is it legal if Jim issues a citation, has a uniform policeman deliver?
Uh, I use police officers and, and they use me too, I was just involved in one last week where. We had a young mother and a child living in a shed.
Oh.
Uh, and they asked me to participate in that.
Um. I just, I.
No, that would.
It is legal.
Will allow that.
Well, we, I mean, it's legal to bring the police in, but we try not to escalate it. Like, the very first thing we do is not, we try not to have the police come in.
Oh, what?
Because we don't want to escalate it.
Well, what I was, what I was getting to Bailey is, there's been, a lot of people's been discourteous to Jim, when he's tried to talk to him. And I thought maybe if the police just delivered it in uniform, it would maybe stop that.
Now I have the court, uh, I have a, one this Thursday night, but the court has ordered the police to go with me. Uh, before too, on several times, they didn't want me going there by myself.
Yeah.
All right, but yeah, back to, I mean, my point is minute, you know, just enforcing what's already on the books. And, you know, I don't want to call Jim out or anybody, but, um, you know. We just need to make sure that we have the best means to do that possible, and if we need to get more for you. Or if we need to change some things around, or change a role, you know, change, change, you know, your role some, allow you to do more enforcement. That's, that's something that we could do, I mean, I'm, I'm putting options on the table, so, just to do that, so. Um. Then percentage of lot use, obviously we've had some things come up. Um, we've had conversations tonight about sheds, different things, what counts under the lot use. We have pools, you have to get a permit for a pool, but it doesn't count as your percentage.
No.
And, and that's something that we should look at, because if you have to take the time and pay for it, I think it should count. Um, you know, decks, sheds, things like that, large playground equipment. Obviously, if I build a huge playground, and it doesn't count, and then I put a pool and then I put a shed. It's, you know, you start to get a backyard full. Um. And then uh, Airbnb registration, I know that we started to touch on that when we went through ADUs. Um, that may be something that falls under uh, chapter thirteen oh one. Oh, I'd like to see something done, whether that's us or whether that's council that does it. Um, like John mentioned, for us, we have what, two of those that are close, they're not in the village, but they're close. Um, we have events around here, and we're having more events around here. That are going to bring people into town from outside of town, and it would not surprise me. Um, especially if we're going to allow ADUs on certain lots where they would want to have an Airbnb. Um, so I'd want to be progressive going through and, you know, mitigating issues before they pop up. If we give those ADUs, grandma's not in there anymore, they're going to use it for something like that, so I'd like to have a framework in place. Um. The ban on uh, temporary garages, we've kind of noticed those canvas tents out there. Uh, I've seen two or three more here pop up lately, uh, as the weather gets worse, so I think that's worth talking about. They're great on day one, they're not so great five years later. Um, so that's something that we should, I think we should talk about. Uh, fences on commercial lots, um, heavy work versus light work, I think that should be something. Falls in our design guidelines. Um, we want to make sure if people are going to have businesses, that the fences are going to hold up and keep. You know, people from looking in on their business, if they have a business where there's a lot of work done, a lot of refuse or something laying around for a day. We want to be able to shield that from public view, if you have a nice business. Maybe your neighbor has a business where they're busy all the time, don't have time every day to clean up, we want to make sure that that's. You know, they have that chance and people aren't looking into their business all the time. Um, I'd like to see, I have some lists of stuff I'd like to see from that, but. Um, and then going down just to Jim, uh, like I asked, um, how much time you spend on enforcement versus the permitting? Um, you know, just going through new builds or new construction, fences, garages, things like that. Um, just kind of wanted to see what time you put into that, um, versus just enforcing what's on the books. Um, I know we have new developments and just general building stuff. And you said you issued what, four hundred and some permit?
Four hundred and fifty-nine.
And I know you're busy on that, and you're busy going after, you know, you're doing different things, putting the time in. So I don't know if that's something that we need to look at the role, and maybe change things around or add some things. Um, and then just our codes in general, if there's a lot of ambiguity in there. And you need some, but if there's ambiguity in there that's leading to judgment calls, that we may not deem as favorable. Um, because we've seen a couple, you know, off Concord, I know some people didn't like the, the tiny house and some stuff like that. If the ambiguity is in there, to lead to unfavorable calls, we want to make sure we tighten some things up and help you out on that. So. I know he's fart time, that's what I'm saying. If, if he's got all this stuff to do, where do, you know, do we? You can always fix some problems by throwing money at it, but maybe we change some things around, so. That's pretty much all I had. Um, I know the other guys had some stuff. If you want to go ahead and list your points, we'll, we'll listen to them.
Um. I had a couple of things. John, do you want to go first? Pull one back out here.
Ryan pretty much hit online.
Make sure you talk in the mic.
Yeah, um. So I had some, just some small code goals. Um. That we had kind of talked about in the past, um, regarding temporary garages. Um, I think the discussion tonight, maybe we should add some, some codes, some specificity about trailers in the code. Um, like Ryan mentioned, this one, the lot, um, usage ratio, needs, I would like to review that. Um, the rental registry implementation, um, so basically, uh. I want that, yeah, that's a priority for me, um. But I think that Bailey's right, we got our hand, we have two really important tasks, the new code and the.
Well.
Design, so I think that's what our main focus should be.
Some of those we can get done.
Which, this will be. Yeah, all of that, all of that that I mentioned is part of the code. Um.
What I might do is like list the zoning code as a goal, and then underneath those lists like.
Subgoals that we have identified as we're going through. Yeah, I like that idea, I like that idea. Um, the only other one that was not related to the code that I had was um, sidewalk improvements, and I know that's not really. Um, this, this whole sidewalk thing intersects with a lot of different groups. And I don't know that that's primarily anything that we have control over. Maybe that shouldn't be on our goals, but that was the only other thing that's on my mind.
Sidewalks is an active topic within Safety and Service Committee, I can tell you that. Something we discuss every single meeting, and it's continuing to uh, kind of come to fruition. Um, based off the discussions that we're having, and there's support behind it, so. I, I can tell you at this point, it's the, the sidewalk uh, improvement piece is actively being discussed with council.
Let's leave that off our goals, that if you guys have it there, I'm comfortable with that.
All right, John. You have anything? You're good? All right, um, Ron, I know you had a couple of things.
Yeah, I agree with Ryan that uh, the ADUs and the accessory structures, uh, the amount that we allow on the lot. Uh, crews, decks and all that, I think that needs to be part of the big ADUs discussion, just giving accessory buildings discussion. Uh, I didn't, you kind of stole my thunder, I had sidewalks on there and then I had, uh, just in the designing guidelines, designer.
All right, Ben.
No, I think we, we hit all the ones that I had on the list as well, my big ones being, uh, what do we have here, one, two, three? Um, and five were the main ones that were uh, on my list. Uh, so making sure that we, we hit those, I think the others will be able to hit as we continue along, just regular conversations and be able to pepper them in with other. Applications and, and things like that as we discuss. And the key too is, I think it's been brought up, is that if we don't have something to discuss. Um, as in an application or something like that in front of us, then we have a work session and try and chew away at some of these items. Um, that are there at top, at the uh, top of the list, maybe some, like I said, some little ones here and there. Um, to keep us moving forward, so.
Yeah, exactly, and that's, that's the perfect kind of meeting, we just do, you know, virtual. If we don't have an actual vote where the public would want to weigh in, um, you know, they still have a chance to weigh in online. But if we don't have anything to actually vote on, then there's not a real point in meeting in person, so. Especially with Corona going on and, until they get rid of that. Um. And then uh, I wanted to go to Jim and Bailey here at the end, for anything that you guys would like to see us work on for this year? Um, any points, anything that you guys need to do to?
I just had a couple of personal goals that I gave to Bailey, so.
Okay.
But they're tied to everything we're talking about here.
Okay.
One way or another, so.
Um, I think within zoning. Um I think within zoning that we should talk about farm animals.
Yeah. That's something that we could talk about. I've had, I know goats, everybody likes chickens and goats.
Yeah.
I get so many calls about chickens.
Sure.
I mean, we do.
So we need to write better language on that.
Okay.
We don't really have any language on chickens. I came up when we were first approached with it. I checked the the least amount of, at least this uh what at that point in time, Granville Milling. Uh would not sell you one chicken or two chickens, you had to buy six.
Yeah.
So we set the limit for six, we set the no roosters.
Right.
So you could have six chickens and you had to have provide a uh place for them, chicken coop. Where they a building, whatever that they could go in and they had to be controlled by a fence. It could be your whole yard or a small area around your chicken coop and that's kind of where we left to that, so.
But there's not actually any of that wording in our code and when people.
Yeah, that's.
Call on it.
We need to get away from.
Because they want to know how many they can have and I'm, you know, you say um you can have as many as you want as long as you keep them contained.
I don't have a problem with chickens, I mean, it's really up to you guys, but I do think that we should set a limit and have something written down.
I agree, roosters probably fall under that new noise ordinance anyway, but.
Yeah, they would, but yeah, it doesn't specifically say you can't have roosters, I know we tell people that, but.
I need there's some chicken.
They could be controlled with the noise ordinance for sure if they were being noisy.
On Sundays, um I'd come out of church and I could hear a rooster, I never could find that one. It was over on William Street somewhere, I could hear it, no one ever complained about it, so.
Yeah, it's funny for a while.
A quick point of reference on that with the animals. Um HB one twenty four from the State one hundred and thirty third General Assembly. Sent to committee in March of nineteen, uh but it has to specifically with allowable small lifestyle. Um and that it's been in committee for almost two years at this point, I don't think it's going anywhere, but it might be a point of reference just to. Look at to see what that was suggesting to be allowable, because if it's at the state level being introduced, I would imagine there's some additional. Push behind it, but just thought it was interesting on the list of state legislative items that I have here, that that's one item, so.
It's because people actually will send, when I worked in the Senate, I actually got letters complaining about people's chickens next door. All the way up at the Senate level.
I believe it.
Alright guys, um I think we've covered a lot of ground. So we'll go ahead and with that, we'll make a motion to adjourn. One second. Alright.
I don't want to go.
All in favor?